Our planning board is for public hearing to accept comment for the site plan application of a distillery warehouse at Montezuma Winery and Hidden Marsh Distillery. I make that motion, thank you.
No second.
Second, Alan Smith, second. Would anybody like to make a comment about this site plan application? Again, anybody liking or wanting to make a comment about the site plan application from Montezuma Winery and Hidden Marsh Distillery? Hearing none, will accept motion to close the public hearing. Hank Bigel moved.
I'll second it.
And Ted Gury second. Okay, that's done. We are now ready to open the regular tire planning board meeting and all members of the board are present accounted for tonight. Regarding the next item on the agenda, the public comment, Bruce Sherman has requested time to speak.
I'm just like Richie from Costa Engineering on behalf of Sesslers and 3S Gateway. Working with Bruce and Craig, I think we're all familiar with the property Northwest Corner 414-318, our previous applications for development there. The request is that the Sesslers would like to start some earth moving operations. There was a fairly large pond that was proposed for the previous development and our intent is that this pond would be constructed and the cuts obtained from digging that would be then placed up slope stabilized, and I don't want to speak out of turn with Craig, but in an attempt to make it a more marketable parcel for future development. Previously to the proposal for the development, stormwater permits were obtained, I think this was back in 2015, to do a similar type of thing, bring and fill and spread that across the site to make it more marketable. That was never done and you know, the anticipation of doing their own development, but in that attempt to bring in the fill, they obtained stormwater permits from the state, they prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan and essentially went through all the necessary steps through the state in order to do this earth disturbing activity. With this proposal, they're not planning on putting any impervious areas, any buildings, more or less just cutting some from the pond and taking that and pushing it up the hill, stabilizing with grass seed and hopefully within two, three months, it'll look like nothing really happened there. So that's the intent and with, you know, pending the planning board's decision, they'd like to get started on that in the next week or so. So happy to answer any questions you may have or if you want to speak to.
Okay, I guess the first question that I have is whether the permits are still in force.
Yes, the permits don't expire with the state as long as you pay your yearly fee.
Okay.
And I sent a copy of that and I can provide to your engineer the link to the state website which shows that it's still active with the state.
Now, the plan that we have before is actually shows some, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's some piping between pond locations?
Correct. There's a wetland there and the intent of that piping is to be able to send water, basically, if you look at the plan, it almost looks like there's two little ponds. Essentially it acts as one pond, there's a wetland finger that kind of juts out towards the east and to avoid impacting that wetland, the pipe essentially goes around it and ties into the other one. So the way that works is as the pond rises, it all rises equally and that's more or less just a pass-through pipe. There will be a discharge structure which will be at the south end at 318 which will discharge into the drainage ditch and then continue to flow south. So this pond was designed for essentially full build-out with roughly 60% pervious, so a lot of roads, a lot of buildings. Clearly they're not going to have any of that, so this pond's going to be oversized for now, but the hope is when development does go in there, a new SWIP, a new design will go through proving this pond is sized adequately for whatever development they get in the future.
Okay, and the northern pond is, will be on part of the subdivision that we're starting to look at now?
Yep, yeah, they'll both be on, sorry, I can't speak exactly to any subdivision that may be going now with the different development. I would, you know, look into that further, but essentially it'd be the anticipation that they'd be on the same property. If not, you know, there's ways to go around that and provide access easements and the like, but essentially they'll act as one pond.
At first blush, we're not convinced that it doesn't require some form of a site plan and I think the best procedure from this point is to schedule a meeting, some form of planning meeting with our engineer to discuss this.
Sure, you know, if I may, you know, I understand the intent, you don't want to make sure you don't get something in the town that you're not going to want. Realistically though, it is now a farmer's field and there is a lot of sediment runoff. You know, if this does stay in agricultural field, you'll have a pond which will protect the wetlands and drainage, so worst case you have, you know, a body of water that's going to clean, you know, other water within the town. I understand the town's concern that you don't want to advance development without engineering review and I'm certainly happy to work with Labella Associates on that.
Yeah, we're not at all against this, it's just that we want to be certain that, you know, I think in our evaluating the site plan review law, we're not certain that this is actually something that doesn't require that. So that's where the discussions would help us interpret the law and know whether or not, you know, anything, any sort of formal action is required.
That's understood, that's understood. You know, I can't go against your town code, your town law and what the proper procedures are, but you know, it would remind you that this would be a very short-term operation and it would all be stabilized. And then in fact, if there ever was development in the future that, you know, was with town code, it would be required to come back in and prove to the town that it's sized correctly for whatever development needs to be done. So really it's a glorified fill permit is what we're asking for at this point.
Well, I think what we can try to expedite a meeting and, you know, we'll try to get something set up with Labella and Mike Simon as soon as possible.
If I may.
Sure.
Being a farmer's field, if, I just wanted that pond there for irrigating that field for crops, does that require in this town a site plan? Because we can't look at it as a development plan even if in the future we do develop it. Right now, it's just going to be a pond, it can be a pond for irrigating the crops or whatever, even though if in the future we do develop property, it'd be used as a retention pond for development. So I'm not really looking for any site plan review or lawyer, the engineers or anything else, I'm looking to just dig a pond. I don't know if, if we're a farmer in the town, if they got to go through a site plan review to dig a pond for irrigation, I don't know the rules there. I thought this was a FYI meeting more than getting into the whole engineering and everything else.
I understand and, you know, we appreciate you bringing it forward. We're just at this point not ready to say, yeah, just go ahead and do it, it doesn't really affect, you know, it doesn't bring to bear any of the site plan law, but we're, that's where the discussion has to take place and we need to be convinced that this is really just something that is a straightforward process that can proceed quickly.
So you as the planning board, just so I can ask, you as a planning board, if I'm here saying I'm looking to dig a pond to irrigate my field, you're there again wanting, I don't know if you're involved with engineers, if any property owner comes in and wants to dig a pond, if I'm any different than that?
Typically we wouldn't.
Okay, so the difference here is what? I had no site plan in to develop that property right now. So we're asking right now, we got the SWIP, which I don't even think you need that for the, a pond for a farmer, but we went through the state, we went through the permit process, we got the state permit and that's basically what we're putting in is two large ponds. If in the future, we do develop that, that ponds will be useful for, for any site development that may happen, but until such time, they'll be used, they can be used for irrigating a field or anything else. And that's, I guess that's sort of.
Yeah, but at this point, we're actually starting to consider a site plan for the northern portion, the subdivision that would be taking place.
Yep, well, any of the ponds we do won't interfere with, won't affect their property at all, unless they need more area for retention, then that much better for the project, if they need more area for retention water, it's already going to be there for them and it's not going to stop the progress of that project, which will also help the tax dollars and the town and everything, so that would just be another plus.
What we're asking for at this point is a timeout, so they have a chance to look at the plan and make a decision. I'm not saying that it has to go.
There is no plan, with all due respect, there is no plan for any work there other than building a pond.
What is that? You know, what's all the permits that you have acquired?
The city has acquired is a permit if you're to serve over an acre of land, whether or not, you know, it's, it's the Sesslers or agricultural, so we're going through the proper state channels to make sure they're in line and in that direction. I mean, I agree with Craig, it's, it's not really development, there's no site plan per se, there's no orderly development of the parcel, it's regrading and seeding and once you're all done with it, you can come back a year later and there will be no difference to the site. So I don't think there's any irrefutable harm or change being made to the property.
We haven't had time to really evaluate it. The plan that we received just came in a couple days ago, so we need to have a look at it and we're happy to sit down with you and discuss it.
All right, we've, so is this a, is that an engineering thing, is that a Labella thing or is it the planning board or, I mean, we're here to do whatever and the reason I say this is because of all the craziness in the world that's going on. I have many available, available that whether we lay them off or what we do, I've got a place to put them if it's here.
Yeah.
To actually get working on this project for a while, so.
Well, then let's move quickly and establish a discussion with our engineers and Coste and we can, you know, really bore into it because at this point, we just don't know enough about it. But if he's treating this as a field like a farmer would, why can't he just move dirt? I mean, apparently he was just making two ponds, right?
That's exactly what it is right now because there's no site development plan for above this.
Obviously if there was ever any development, that's not a shortcut to get ponds approved and then do whatever you want later, we'd have to get a new permit. This is not a permit forever, this is only for this operation. Once they plan on putting one building and one piece of pavement, you have to get a brand new permit with the state. So this isn't like the, we do it now and then you can come back and do whatever we want later. This is just for this right now and we put a lot of engineering thought into this. This pond has actually been reviewed by Labella multiple times, it's the same layout from one who's full build-out. So it's, it was oversized for that, so it's a large pond, so there's no issue with flooding and, you know, when we do submit back for any sort of development, Labella has every right and will review and confirm that it's sized for whatever development is necessary. And in the interim, I'd be happy to, you know, have a conversation or submit plans to Labella and if it, you know, doesn't need to go to planning board, more or less engineering review, if they give you the thumbs up, if we can work something out with them.
That's precise of the point.
In the next couple days, I can send them a plan and if I can have a conversation with Mike Simon, he can relay to you that there's no real issue here.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to get. I'm not saying you can't do it or you, it's not, you know, and I'm not saying that you have to have a site plan, but I'm saying let's understand this so we know what's going on.
Sure, sure.
And we will try to expedite that meeting so that perhaps later this week, we can have that discussion with them.
Now, can I have a question, ask the question now, if, whether or not it's a planning board action or not, could this be a discussion with town staff and Labella and maybe have it done, you know, during normal business hours instead of a regularly scheduled or a special planning board meeting?
This will be, you know, not in a meeting.
Right.
Not in a formal board meeting, this will just be a discussion.
If we can get this scheduled and sorted out this week.
Yeah.
You'd be satisfied.
Yeah.
And then Labella comes back and says they're satisfied.
Exactly.
Okay, no, I'm fine with that, as long as, as long as Labella being engineers and as long as they're not going to say, okay, what's your site plan for, there is none, we're digging a pond for now, that's what we're doing, so I'm not sure what engineering Labella's going to have into it, but that's what we're doing.
Yep.
So I'd like to ask Craig a question. If you had a farmer come to you and said, I'm going to put a pond in, what would be your answer?
They do allow the project D E C, get to commit they need to get done, nothing with us.
Okay. So is the quick call then to the engineer, dah dah dah.
Craig, I'm fine with that, I thought we were looking at setting up whether.
A month later or something.
No, no, no.
Okay, no, if it's that, then I'm fine. Like I say, it's not going to be this week and maybe not even the beginning of next week, but I'm thinking it's something we'd want to start taking action on within a week or so, so it's not an emergency right now, but it just helps me plan ahead a little bit.
Yeah, that works for us.
Okay, great, and I appreciate your attention onto it and thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
Thanks. And I don't think there is any other public comment for tonight, so we can move on to the approval of the minutes of April 28, 2020. Has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes? It's a little bit more involved than typical meetings, but any corrections? We have a motion to approve the minutes of April 26, 28?
I'll make the motion.
Ken Hollenstein has moved. Ken Hollenstein has moved.
I'll second.
Al Smith has seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Aye, can you oppose?
I'm staying. I wasn't here.
Okay, so noted. Mr. Reynolds, you say you don't have anything to report?
Just saying, don't.
Business is slow.
Just doing a lot of packets for the large project and everything else, but no, nothing really striking at this time.
Okay, thank you. Am I current with permits?
It's out of your cup. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we move into old business. And first item is consideration of the amended site plan submitted by Martin's Honey Farm, or Montezuma Winery, or Hidden Marsh Distillery, all the same organization. Did you bring, members of board, did you bring copies or have copies with you from last month?
Yeah.
Okay. I have revised, I'm sure you found lots of errors in that one. I don't know how that was-
Yeah, there's a couple, two, three of them.
Yeah. So let me distribute these.
Oh, this is the same one I got.
Do you got it?
It is the same one.
Yeah.
You get this one?
Yeah, I agree with the first, the second sentence.
Well, I know where the errors are. We'll correct them as we go. Yeah, don't bother. Let's, let's discuss though, the amended site plan. I think it was, it's all very straightforward. The Martins found that they needed to, they originally had planned for the building to be attached, the distillery storage building to be attached to the main building. And when they finally started moving forward on it, county code told them that in order to do that, they were going to need a substantial firewall between the two buildings for the attachment. So, Martins had come back and requested that they move the building, I think it's 14 feet to the east, which is satisfies fire code, but it is different from the original site plan, and consequently, they have amended it. And that's what they presented to us here. We had reviewed the plan previously, with the exception of the building being moved. And I think it's all very straightforward. I don't think we need to debate the issue too much, but I'm certainly willing to discuss it if anybody wants to raise any issues about the amended site plan. Okay. We do have a draft resolution before us, and I can quickly go through this. And point out the errors. In the first paragraph, establishing that this is, this approval is being done at the regular meeting of the planning board. Its location, of course, now is not in Waterloo anymore, but it's in 1082 gravel road in Seneca Falls. On the 8th day of June.
Yep.
And the next whereas describes the, basically, the project and the location. The next whereas is that we have reviewed, the application was reviewed on February 25, 5th, and deemed to be complete. Following the whereas is the board, at a regular meeting, determined that it was a type 2 action under SECRE, meaning that there was no further environmental quality review needed. Whereas at the bottom of the page is that we had submitted this to Seneca County Planning, and they have recommended that we approve the site plan application. Second last whereas is the, we have properly noticed the public hearing, which is on June 8, 2020. And final whereas, stating that it meets the requirements of the zoning law and our site plan review regulations. Now, once we move the motion, we put in the conditions that we typically add to these sorts of approvals, that the final approval will be enforced once there's proof that all the fees and professional reviews are completed and paid, that the McGee Fire Department has approved it, that they've received all the necessary permits, if necessary, beyond the town, and that they fill out a schedule of completion and a schedule of values once the project is completed. That this permit expires in six months, and the approval carries on to successors or assignments. Conditions seven and eight will be removed. They were unnecessary at this point. And then under further resolves, we say that is the site plans consistent with the town competency plan. It's consistent with the zoning law. Site plan is consistent with the site plan law number 2, 2015. It's consistent with the appropriate development of the neighborhood and surrounding area. And the site plan provides for appropriate and suitable development of the entire areas in integrated harmonious unit, considering location, bulk heights of the buildings, and so on. Any questions about the resolution? Sorry, remember there was another date that needed to be corrected, but anything that referred to May 26, which was when we were originally planning to approve this, should be June 8.
On the very last page.
Yeah.
Last page.
At the bottom.
Yep.
Or not, yeah, okay, that's it. Under your certification line. Okay.
Just to go back on the front page, there's the first paragraph, and make sure we get all the members listed on that. All the board members.
Yep, we're missing-
Devin, Eric Henry.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or corrections? Would somebody care to move?
I would, Marshall, you move it.
Okay, and you would move approval?
For what?
Approval, okay. And Pickle has moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Karen Thompson has-
With approval.
So it is approval of the site plan. We'll do the roll vote. Al Smith?
Yes.
Deb Geary?
Yes.
And Hollenstein?
Yes.
Karen Thompson?
Yeah.
And Pickle?
Yes.
Larry Kessel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the resolution was therefore duly adopted, circle adopted on that one, for this thing? While you're doing all that, Chief, did you move the, these couple things on to the next page? Yeah, I wasn't sure if we would, we'll wait till the edits, and we'll make sure that those are bunched together on the page. Okay. So Craig, you can inform Bill Martin?
I sure will, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the completion of the SECRE process for the site plan application submitted by Empty Pockets LLC. This is commonly referred to as the Burkholder Project. I do have some newer copies, if anybody wants one.
Craig, does it end in a?
Yes. I meant for the resolution.
Oh, no.
I mean, we'll get to the resolution, but why don't we pass these out, so we can work with those? Get these distributed. Now, hopefully, perhaps Alex from Labella is online to work with us as we go through the SECRE process?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Ah, you are there. Great, Alex. I'm glad to hear that.
I hate it.
Now, Alex, for your benefit, we do have before us the part two, part three, and the narrative for the SECRE. And I'm wondering if you would be willing to, and feel comfortable, lead us through that process?
Yes, yeah, I can do that. I think it'll probably make a little sense since the project is fairly straightforward from a SECRE aspect. I will explain parts to the three that I'm planning to just highlight the main points outlined in part three narrative.
Yes, that's fine.
Unless there's any other specific question.
Good, good, I agree.
Okay. All right, so based on information that was submitted to the planning board in part one of the environmental assessment form, on behalf of the town, Labella, using DEC guidance, SECRE guidance, we completed part two of the full environmental assessment form to identify if the proposed Burkholder project would have any adverse impact on the environment. And a lot of the questions were just simple, either yes or no. It either meets a certain threshold according to the DEC or it doesn't. And so, some of the questions are, might seem a little, our response is might seem a little conservative, but we didn't want to overlook anything, so there are some items that aren't really of concern, but we did make note of them, just so that it would be on the record. So, the main point that I wanted to note was are related to the impact on land that the proposed project could potentially have, as well as impact on surface water and plants and animals. So, the, according to the SECRE workbook, which is the SECRE guidance that the DEC prepares to walk through each question in part two of the EAF, we selected yes for a small impact on land, basically just because the project will involve excavation of forested land, less than an acre, about three quarters of an acre of forested land, in order to construct a residential structure. Because the proposed project overall will disturb greater than one acre, a FEED, which is a state potent discharge elimination system, FEED permit, issued by the state, DEC, will be required as part of this project. And that permit will require that the contractor takes certain precautions in order to avoid sedimentation during the construction activities. That will ensure the least impact on the nearby agricultural land. Based on the project, following all of the state guidance, we determine that there will not be, there should not be a negative impact on the land as a result of the proposed project.
Okay.
The next item, I will, any questions on that?
Yeah, Alex, I'll just sort of get a nod from the planning board members, would they agree with that? No, it's a small impact.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the next one that we selected, a small impact, would be on surface water. So, the DEC mapper did identify a DEC wetland buffer zone, not an actual wetland, just a buffer zone, located to the west of the proposed project area. As I mentioned previously, the project will disturb greater than one acre of land, so a slip was prepared, and reviews Alabama. And based on that slip, all stormwater discharged on the project site will be treated on-site prior to its discharge. And the flow rate of stormwater runoff post-construction is anticipated to be less than or equal to pre-construction amount. This means we have deemed that there will be no negative impact on nearby surface water, such as wetlands, in the nearby vicinity.
Okay. Take a nod from folks? Do we agree? Okay, Alex?
Okay. The next item that we selected, small impact, no to small impact, would be impact on plants and animals. We simply catch this because the DEC mapper has flagged the Indiana bat, which is an endangered species. It flagged it in the, in the area of the project site. And from past experience, they know the town is familiar with, with the Indiana bat. Therefore, the project will follow guidance set by the DEC and US Fish and Wildlife Service in order to protect the Indiana bat and any potential habitat that may or may not be within the project area. The main item here is there will be a seasonal tree-cutting restriction. Tree clearing will only occur between October 31st and March 31st. When the Indiana bat is said to be in hibernation and not rooting in trees. This is a pretty standard requirement. I believe the town is really familiar with this. Based on this, assuming that- Um, based on this, assuming that this project does follow this guidance, um, we do not see there being any adverse impact on the environment.
Okay. Looking for the head nods here, I think we're all, we are all in agreement. You may continue, Alex.
Okay, uh, next one is impact on agricultural resources. Again, so even though the land isn't, you know, agricultural farm cropland in the project um, site, we did have to check yes because the project site is located in Seneca County Agricultural District Number Six. Um, based on the fact that the majority of the project area is wooded land, that's not actively utilized as, you know, agricultural cropland or anything like that, um, and we have determined that this project will not have a significant adverse impact on the agricultural resources in the county. Um, there is a note in the Part Three EAF narrative that, um, in order to minimize any impact that the construction might have on agricultural land, the town attire will require the contractor to compile specific construction requirements established by the Department of Ag and Market.
Okay.
Just wanted to make note of that.
Alright. Head nods? Everybody's in agreement with that? Okay, good, go ahead.
And the last two items are fairly short, uh, one is impact on energy. This is one of those things we just have to check it based on the specific sub-questions within the DEC guidance. Um, there will technically be an impact on energy, uh, from the construction of a single-family residential home. Uh, this increase will, will not result in any significant, um, impact to the local energy infrastructure. Uh, therefore, we're saying that the project is anticipated to only have a small impact and no significant adverse impact.
Okay. Everybody agrees? We're good? Thank you.
And then the last one is a combination of impact on noise, odor, and light. Um, we did note that due to construction activities, there will be a, an increase, a temporary increase in, um, noise and potentially odor during construction activities, however, these will be temporary, they will not last past, um, construction. Uh, one item to note is that the, uh, there is a light proposed as part of the project, and it, we don't believe that it will really cause any significant light shining into, uh, you know, adjacent areas just based on where it will be located on the property. Um, it will be located nearly 300 feet away from the house located on Lot One, and over 250 feet away from the proposed house, which will be construction, constructed on Lot Three. Um, the light will also be downward facing and dark sky compliance to eliminate, uh, any, you know, light spill, as I mentioned. Uh, based on all of this, we're saying that we do not foresee any significant adverse impact on the environment related to noise, odor, or light.
Okay. Again, I see agreements, nodding in agreement?
Yeah, agreement. Lot Three doesn't, uh, you're not gonna build there anymore, but Lot Three shouldn't.
Well, it, right, but there's still subdivided, so it could potentially have a, some sort of a building on it in the future.
Okay.
So they continued with the subdivision. The, the lighting issue, um, I think is something that, that we'll address also when we get to the full approval process for the site plan, but I agree, Alex, that from an environmental perspective, this is, this is not a major issue. Okay.
Do you have Alex's name and title?
Yes, okay, yeah, I'll give that to you. Please. Okay, so that completes Part Two. Do you want to discuss a little bit about the narrative that we have in front of us?
Um, sure, so, pretty much everything that I just mentioned is directly from Part Three, the narrative.
Okay. One of the board members looked at me and said she did all of it.
It's all very redundant.
It is, it's, it's a process. So...
Yes, it is.
We have, um, a motion in front of us, and again, there's a correction on that, which was pointed out to us last month, or earlier this month, last month, on the title of EmptyPockets, there's a, an extra A in empty, that will be removed.
Empty?
Yes. So we have in the form of the resolution that we, under our whereas's, we talk about it, um, being part of the review process on the application that was submitted, and, Craig, do you have the submission date on that? That's one thing we need to...
No, I can't, I don't.
Okay, we'll fill that in. And it explains the project. And on October 23rd of 2018, we said to the, for seeker, that this was an unlisted action, and therefore we'd have to go through the seeker process. We did have in hand the full environmental assessment form. Uh, we did contact all of the, uh, we, we took on responsibilities lead agency and contacted interested, and, um, I don't think there are any involved agencies as such, but interested agencies. That the planning board has carefully considered the environmental record of this action, which is the process that we have gone through in the completion of the seeker Parts Two and Part Three. And therefore, be it resolved that the planning board determines that based on environmental record, which has been prepared, the action will have, or will not have, depending on our choice here, significant adverse effect on the environment, and therefore, environmental tax statement has been prepared. Or will not, yeah. And for these reasons, a negative declaration under seeker is therefore issued. And that I have been, that I will be charged with signing the, the full environmental assessment form. Any questions on that resolution? Does somebody care to make the motion?
I'll vote.
Al Smith has moved. Do we have a second? Ken Hounstein has second. Ready to go through a roll call vote? Al Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Deb Gary?
Yes.
Ken Hounstein?
Yes.
Karen Thompson?
Yes.
Henry Pickle?
Yes.
Larry Kessel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright. The resolution has passed, that there is no environmental impact. Thank you very much, Alex, we appreciate your assistance in this and Lobella's assistance.
Gotta change the date down to bottom.
Of course, it's our pleasure.
Pardon me?
I just said, of course, it's our pleasure.
I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay, um, thank you, Alex, and we will get the, uh, Part Three completed and taken care of, and then next month, we'll actually start going through the approval process for the site plan and subdivision, but we wanted to try to get this out of the way this month, because next month is going to be particularly busy. So again, thank you, you, Alex, you don't need to stay with us. Okay, take care.
I agree.
Goodbye.
Yes, bye-bye.
Which date was it?
Right above my name there, you have to make that down there.
Okay. I got it. Alright. Done. Now, under old business, we have the topic again of recommendation to the town board for vacancies in the zoning board of appeals and alternate for the planning board member. Uh, we do have a candidate for the alternate for the planning board, and that is Doug Jones over on Westbrook Road. Doug has agreed to serve in that capacity, and as a farmer, he does bring on representation to the planning board, which we've been looking for, for a while. So, I will submit that name to the town, or to Ron for submission to the town board. On the other hand, we still have not been successful in getting, um, a zoning board of appeals member, and I'm wondering if, I'm gonna throw it out to you folks and see if you have any suggestions. We, I've talked to a number of people who have, uh, eventually decided that they did not want to serve. So, I'm just looking, I don't want a warm body, I want somebody who's, you know, really interested in the job. Although it doesn't really take a lot of time for them, but it's still something that needs to be taken seriously. Anybody in our audience know somebody who would think they'd like to serve on the zoning board of appeals?
I lost the one I wanted to, the assessor.
Do we have any regulations that they can't serve the two boards at once? I don't know.
I used to have an planning board in the BAR, back in the day.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I know, I know we have, we have restriction on somebody being on zoning board and, or zoning board of appeals and planning board. That's in the zoning law, but, I don't... Who would you suggest it again?
Um, Marianne, the, the new girl in the...
Sloan.
Sloan, thank you, whoever said it. Yeah, Marianne Sloan. Oh, my buddy Jim, yeah. That was the night I went back and hollered at her for going with him. Couple of, number of months ago now.
They really are quite independent, and again, they don't, it's not as if they're beating every single law.
Yeah, and I thought she would have been perfect for that.
Well, we can give that a try.
Well, she's gone. She's gonna go with that assessor's job, she likes that.
Yeah, but I'm saying, maybe she would do both if you...
Well, I could talk to her again.
Why don't you?
I shall.
I know that Ron wanted to bring it before the town board at their next meeting, which I guess is on the 18th of this month?
Yes, sir.
But, I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that. If Marianne Sloan would accept it, how does the board feel about her being on the zoning board of appeals? And again, we're just recommending, we're not doing the actual appointing.
I don't think we're going. This is a lot of Kevin. I don't know. No. No, no, the other one out, just past West Tire. I don't know.
Marsh, Marsh.
Marsh, thank you. Remember, it's getting late in the day for the old guy.
So right at the corner, West Tire and Marsh?
Well, one in. She's the first one in.
Yeah.
Very nice lady, and she's was at a county job.
Okay.
She's a good head.
Well, if you would do that?
Yes, I would.
And, and if she were to accept, any concerns about that from the planning board members? Okay. Let's give it a try. If you would check with her, Larry.
Yeah, so there's no reason why she couldn't do both?
I don't think so. I think they're, they're not really related.
True.
I don't think there's any ZBA action that would come in conflict with the board of assistance.
Well, might be the, the action you took on a permit, and that the taxes were sky-high.
Well, if, if, if she accepts, and she's the only candidate we can recommend, we'll let Ron be the final arbiter of that anyhow.
Yeah.
He can, he can say yes or no.
And she could have stayed on the board anyways.
Yeah.
I mean, I did that a lot at the county.
Okay. Alright.
I shall do that.
Any other old business that I haven't covered so far? Any questions on that? We can move into new business. And you have received, uh, information on the proposed change to the zoning law that the town board wants to take a look at at their upcoming meeting. This is, um, a change in the footnotes of the bulk table for the commercial zone west that gives the planning board some additional ability to modify, uh, conditions for applicants who are on parcels of land that are butt or joined to the New York State thruway. So it's right in the, essentially the high-density area of commercial zone west. And we are experiencing, um, a lot of talk and concerns that, you know, the regulations that are in the zoning law, um, in terms of, you know, signage and setbacks and things in the commercial zone west, especially close to the thruway, present a lot of problems for developers. And in discussion with, um, Tom Ware, the planning board attorney, and the zoning enforcement officer, um, they have come up with the text or the wording for this eighth footnote that simply provides, uh, opportunity for the planning board to modify some of the conditions that are set forth in the zoning law. Have you had a chance to go over those before the meeting? Again, this is going to be a, an action by the town board, but they would like a recommendation from the planning board. from the planning board. Would somebody care to read the footnote eight? That's under the bulk table, the proposed footnote eight?
I'm going to read it.
This is the text of the footnote. "The planning board, when reasonable to do so, may waive or vary any requirements, regulations, and/or bulk standards which may apply to parking and/or signage requirements or regulations contained within the tire zoning law with regards to parcels of land located in commercial west zoning district, which also abut or adjoint New York State Route 90." Discussion.
We should do everything we can to help with this.
Okay.
And it's a clause that we're not gonna need to use very often.
No, I wouldn't think so.
Right.
Because it is, it's focusing down a specific area.
I think it's another tool in your toolbox.
Yeah.
It's a clause.
Would anyone care to make a motion that we recommend this addition to the town board? Okay, Hank has moved. Al Smith has seconded. It is simply that motion, that we recommend that they adopt this modification to the bulk table for commercial zone west.
Yep. Verbal emphasis, the shoulder, we all?
Sure. Do you feel you have, Larry, the text of that? Because I just spouted it off. I didn't, I didn't write this one up.
Yeah, close enough, I think.
Okay, good. Well, we can do a voice vote. I'll just go around and counter here to Al Smith.
Yeah.
Henry Bickle.
Aye.
Devin Eery. Ken Hounstein.
Yes.
Karen Thompson.
Yeah.
Larry Kessel.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right? Fantastic. Now, one other new business item is that we have a request for a subdivision on West Tiger Road. It's a minor subdivision. And I think it's a pretty straightforward process. We did, we have the application that's worth... Well, Craig has the application. And it's really just that 10 acres of land is being sold by Michael and Rebecca Schmucker to Richard Engle Banks for eventually a home development site and joins the bank's property on Tucker Road. It's all very straightforward. What we're doing at this point is simply accepting the application. And if accepted, we will hold public hearings, since subdivisions require public hearings. We'll do that later this month at our regularly scheduled planning board meeting. And we already have in hand the narrative, the standard application form, a list of the letters, the site... Craig, we say site plan completed in this form, does that apply to subdivisions as well?
Correct.
Yeah. And the Seeker short form, our now assessment, the ID statement, and the stamp survey. This... Craig, is this gone to county or is it gonna go...
Does that vote in front of the county or does the A, is A O?
Okay, that's right. All of this, this is a subdivision within a district, according to Gmail 239. It should go before the county. But you may recall that some years back, the county had set up a memorandum of understanding between the county and towns in Seneca County, that under certain conditions and situations, they felt it really wasn't necessary for a, an action to come before the county planning board. And in fact, this is one of those situations. So we confirmed that with them, and they said, no, we don't really need to see it. So if we approve this application, we can act on it at our monthly meeting later this month. That will kind of get things speeded along for them. So the, the resolution is pretty much standard resolution that we've used in situations like this. I can read it if you wish, but I think if you had a chance to look over it, it's pretty much what we deal with every time we come up to a simple subdivision. Does anybody want me to read it with my poggie voice?
Poggy.
Thank you. Would somebody care to make the motion then to accept the application? I'll make that motion. Karen Thompson has moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Good. Devin Eery. We just do a voice vote, those in favor say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? All right. Seven to zero, no abstentions. And we change the dates where necessary. And we'll circle that it is due later.
And we do have time to put out for a public hearing for the end of June?
Yes, I have, the public hearing announcements are prepared, they're gonna go out tomorrow.
Okay.
We're doing that both for the Empty Pockets, no, no, not Empty Pockets, for this one and, oh, something called Love's Project. The Love's Travel Center. Yes, that is going to be, we're gonna start working on that next month.
Okay.
So both of those will be noticed for June 23rd.
Next, so, not next month, but this month.
This month?
Yes.
See, we're actually doing our May meeting tonight.
Yeah, so this week, next week.
Yes, yep. Okay. I don't have any correspondence to report. Larry, do you have anything you wanna talk about?
I'd only wanna mention one thing real quick that I was kinda proud of that, and I don't even know where that note pile went, but when we had to reschedule the meeting, we always do it on Tuesdays, and first thing I said was that I had a, would like to spend it with my wife, because it's her birthday tomorrow. And without anybody discussing anything, you all just bent over and said, yeah, let's do it. And I appreciate that, it's fun. We do a lot of things that we don't get credit for, I guess, but that's what I wanted to say to everybody, that there's things that go on that we do together that we do a pretty darn good job.
There was also a comment made at that time that maybe we should look at a different day of the month. And I'm not opposed to that, and I think if, I think Hank, it was you to say that, you know, if you're running into a lot of conflicts and there's another day that works better for you, let's, let's have a discussion at some point. But think about it, you know, are there, are there certain days of the week that are just absolutely not available, but I, you know, I fortunately have more and more time. So, you know, if we choose a different night of the week, pretty flexible at this point.
On a Tuesday, if you do want, or the supervisor will be, we can, I mean, we won't do, I mean, to me, any day of the week other than our typical Tuesday.
Yeah. Yeah. Thursdays are typically open for him. I mean, we would, we couldn't do it the third Thursday, but we could do it the fourth Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, other than that.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't require any action now, but let's think about it and not forget it. But down, down the road, we've got a, a meeting that doesn't have a real heavy agenda, we can come back and talk about it. That's all I...
We can wait till next year. I have a feeling the floodgates are gonna open here pretty soon.
Well, I don't know. We'll wait and see.
Love's is gonna be a handful.
Yeah. I think that, I think Love's is gonna, you know, they've really come in well-prepared. Things will move swiftly.
I do have one more thing I wanted to hit.
Certainly, I'm sorry.
But it's okay. Training, we're all set for this year with most of the people on the planning board. I have two people open for the total, and I've never given them anything, so I hope you're watching all of the information I sent your way with the webinars and other offerings in the counties. And one person has got halfway to go, so everybody's set on that. I'll have to report out the end of the month. And I also do have activity in 2021. And our chairman has now started to join that club through a webinar. So we've, Al Smith and I welcome you. That's it for me.
Okay. All right. There's no further business, I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Hank has moved.
I'll second.
Dan has seconded. Thank you. We'll see you soon. On 23rd. Thank you.